All right, good evening. It is Tuesday, March 8th at 6:30. The City of Bastrop reserves the right to reconvene recess or realign the regular session or called executive session or order of business at any time prior to adjournment. We have a full dais at 6:30, and I'm calling this meeting to order. We are so lucky tonight. We have the Emile Child Development Center. Their director, Misty Jefferson, is with us, and we have some special guests. And as I call your name, you can come stand up here by the front. We have Xander Jones. He's this many. And we have Grace Mauser. Come on up, Grace. And we have Ally Lake and Tyler Allen. And they have been working really, really hard. And if everyone will please stand up, these young people are going to lead us in the pledges. Very exciting. Not all four-year-olds have been to city council. If you would please remain standing, we have Pastor Stephen Bunker with us. He is the worship leader for River Valley Christian Fellowship, and we're so happy that you've agreed to do our invocation.
Thank you, Mayor. Let us pray. Lord God, we thank you for the life you give us and the absolute freedom from sin that you have given us through Jesus Christ and His death on the cross and resurrection. We thank you that you have blessed us to live in such an awesome city, state, and nation. God, we pray tonight specifically for our mayor, our city manager, and city council. I ask that every decision being made and proposals brought forth in this room and from this podium will be in the loving spirit of Christ to serve and benefit the most people in the growing city of Bastrop. God, we acknowledge and understand that decisions for our city can be difficult to process at times. And so, we need you, and I pray and ask for peace of mind, clarity, and respect in all that is presented tonight. May all things be in agreement with your good and perfect will. Let's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you so much. You may be seated. All right. Great way to start a meeting. All right, we're moving on to the mayor's report on item 4A. And Colin, we're going to go ahead and just jump right into it. You can see that it was a pretty short window of activity, so that's why there's only two pictures. The Living Room Bookstore had a book signing. TJ Finn wrote a book called There's a Dinosaur in My Whirlpool. And that's what happens when you find yourself raising grandchildren. Stuff like that can happen at your house. So, I know a lot of people will be touched and appreciate that book. And then, next to that, I spent March 1st at Gracie's. It is a terrific Bastrop tradition of having the votes go up on the board. I teased Brian Gertz that I wanted a picture of him working, and he said, yeah, there weren't a whole lot of them, but he was glad that I got one. And although 24% sounds like a really high number, if you consider that there were 12,861 ballots cast out of over 53,000 voters, it's a number that makes us all wish that there would be more people that would come out and vote. I know there are a number, a couple of offices that will have a runoff, and that runoff election will be on May 24th. All right, Colin, we can go to the next page. Just wanted to highlight a couple of things. City Manager Hoffman made a presentation at the chamber luncheon, and I thought he did a great job. And some other council members may have some comments about that. And then, last night, I went to, I think I have some of my dates mixed up. I did a briefing on the Rolling Pines Fire with Chief Rosales, and then I got to host the Farm Street Opry, and the guests were Doug Boggs and Neil Kohonic. And I had, one of the funniest questions is, why don't I make more people go to the Farm Street Opry? And I don't know how to make people go, but I do know to say that it is some fabulous live music, and we just encourage people to participate on the first Thursday of every month. Market Days was on Main Street on the first Saturday, and I've been asked to remind folks that that will be the first Saturday of every month. And this morning, Councilmember Plunkett and myself and Councilmember-elect Kirkland were all at the Government Affairs Committee meeting that the chamber, as a part of the chamber, and myself, the city manager, and Assistant City Manager Gleason, all participated in a meeting with the Texas Restaurant Association. And Councilmember Plunkett was there as both a council member and as a member of the Texas Restaurant Association. And here we are at council tonight. Looking ahead this week and looking ahead to the next council meeting, on Thursday morning, I'll be at Cedar Creek Elementary for Career Day. And you can see there's a couple of ribbon cuttings, the Live After Five. I want to make sure everyone knows that the Empty Bowl is on March 12th. The mayor's prayer luncheon that's hosted by the Ministerial Alliance is on March 15th. And you see a couple of other meetings. Last night, and I apologize, Colin, you can go back one, I have my notes written in the wrong spot. On March 7th, last night, from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM over at the Convention Center, Texas Parks and Wildlife presented on the Rolling Pines Fire. And they had promised us that they would do an independent report, and they did. And the person in charge of the independent report was a forest protection chief from South Carolina named Darrell Jones. Chief Jones reported on the findings, and I wanted to make sure that folks knew Bo Chesser from Georgia, Cassie Crowe from Florida, Drew Daley from Oklahoma, and Ken Parker from Georgia were all the people that participated in putting that report together. They were subject matter experts on, it was interesting how they put out the call, experience with pines, experience with a park, experience with a park that's next to public property, experience with prescribed burns. There was some major experience going on there. This report is available, I believe it's online, but I know if you reach out to Texas Parks and Wildlife, you can get a copy of that report if you would like. I attended that meeting. City Manager Hoffman attended the meeting. Councilmember Jackson attended the meeting, and Councilmember-elect Lee attended that meeting. It was fairly well-attended. There was a lot of information. Thanks was given once again to Chief Rosales and our fire department that worked so hard the day of that incident. And I think one of the things that the city manager and I were the most pleased with is the absolute commitment that the City of Bastrop Fire Department will be a part of the process before other prescribed burns take place. So, we will enter into being a part of that planning process. So, with that, council, we'll be back here on March 22nd, and that is the end of my mayor's report. So, let me get my notes. And Mayor Protem Peterson, you have anything for us this evening?
Thanks, Mayor. Just briefly, I want to thank the city manager for his presentation over at the meeting at the Convention Center. Very well done. Colin, I tried to call you to tell you, I didn't get a chance to stick around, but I did want to call you to say that was an excellent job. Thank you very much. And Mayor, you mentioned the, excuse me, the Rolling Pines Fire. I just want to give a shout out to the Bastrop Food Pantry. They were on the news today and had people talking about how the food pantry came to their aid because they had a lot of food and so forth that spoiled while they were out of their homes. And just want to give kudos to the Bastrop Food Pantry. Thank you so much.
Great. Thank you, Mayor Protem Peterson. Councilmember Rogers, do you have anything for us this evening?
Actually, Mayor, I have nothing today.
All right. Councilmember Plunkett?
Well, of course, I did the same meetings that you did today. But I did want to shout out to the Texas Restaurant Association. They were, through the pandemic, they did an amazing job of keeping the industry informed as far as, with the incredible pace of changes in protocols and safety measures. They did, I can't say enough about how much they've done as being an advocate for the restaurant business. Obviously, we all got hit very hard during that, and it's great that we're all coming out of it, but we should recognize them for what they did in the toughest time that we've ever had. Also, just been spending a lot of time trying to talk with contractors and developers and the Home Builders Association, trying to understand the permitting process better and what we can do to improve it.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Plunkett. Councilmember Crouch?
Let's see. I had an interesting week last week because I started it with a full knee replacement, which was my third one in 15 years. So, that was...
Same knee or different knee?
No, no. It was a 15-year replacement. That one lasted 15 years, and I think I counted up 34,800 miles on my bike on that knee because that's what got me biking initially was rehab from that knee replacement. So, I'm glad that's over with, and right now I can walk a mile a day, a little bit more than that, give or take. So, that was all real nice. I did crash the pickleballers at the park, and I think that's going to be part of my new rehab is pickleball down there whenever I get, when I get a little bit more mobile than I am now. And... The biking thing, People for Bikes had sent me another email. I'd sent them an email last year just for some survey and biking-friendly city information, and they're following up with me now that it's spring and people are starting to bike. So, we'll get some new information and some good ideas for making Bastrop a better biking city, better than it already is. And the survey, I'd gotten a survey together to try to put into the city website for the builders and contractors and just for people in general to respond to, to see how we're doing in that department and to get some positive responses. And we'd gotten a list of 20-some-odd questions, and then I spent most of the day today putting that survey list together in a survey so that we could all look at it in survey form, hopefully approve everything that's in it based on all the comments that we had the last couple of weeks, and then get that implemented so we can get that information. So, I got to spend some time on the Excel spreadsheet today, working on that a little bit. And then, I think that's it. I didn't get to go to a lot of functions because of the knee thing, but I'm glad at least I got to go to a few. It's a miracle what they can do with parts and titanium now. It's pretty neat.
Excellent. We're glad that you are well on the road to recovery. Councilmember Jackson?
Well, I was just going to say that I did go to the Rolling Pines, the fire report from Parks and Wildlife, and I found it very informative. It was very, the information was great. And I managed to get a copy of the report, and I was going to give it to our city secretary or any of the staff or council that would like a copy of it. It is on their website, I think, also, but I managed to snag one from one of the people that was there that had an extra copy. I was really excited about that because the day before, I had met Chief Jones because he checked into the hotel where I work part-time. And so, he was telling me about his presentation, and so I met with him, and he was really excited, and I was trying to give him all the scoop on Bastrop, where to, where to go and what to do. And then, I spoke with him afterwards, and he was even more excited. He said he's going to bring his family back to Bastrop. I told him as long as he stayed at the Hampton, he can come back. But he was real happy about that. The mayor and I went on to Georgetown for a board meeting with the Texas Municipal League on the 25th of February, and it was my last board meeting. I'm leaving the board as I'm leaving office, but we'll be in great hands, I'm sure, with the mayor still being a part of that board. But the Municipal League is the league that helps cities across the state, and we are really honored to have, I think it's great for us to have two members from our city that were involved with that organization since it is a statewide organization. Went to the chamber luncheon, and I want to applaud the city manager for his report. It was very informative, and I was listening to a lot of the different things, and it was, you know, I know he could have gone on and on for a long, much longer period of time because there's a lot that the city has done, but it was very good, and I think the public learned a lot from that. I've gotten a lot of calls from people about, of course, the new, the different changes with the sign ordinance, and I know we're going to discuss that later, but a lot of people, because of the banner flags, the feather flags and things like that, they were a little concerned about that, and I didn't realize it was affecting us as much. But I did get, in fact, several members of my church, because of the fish fries that we have on Fridays, contacted me and wanted to be aware of that and the permitting process in general. So, I'm looking forward to seeing how we're going to address those issues as they come up. But that's all I have for now.
Thank you, Councilmember Jackson. All right. The next item on our agenda is the city manager's report. Mr. Hoffman?
Thanks, Mayor. So, a little bit of an update on my week last week. Council, I think you know that I have the privilege of serving as the chair of the Texas City Management Association's Ethics Committee, and we had a meeting in Austin on Thursday. One of the things we do is, unfortunately, from time to time, we do receive complaints from citizens, the general public, about the activities of a city manager, and one of our responsibilities is to evaluate that and ultimately make recommendation on its outcome to our board of directors. And then, on Friday, a city manager colleague of mine and I provided what we call Train the Trainer training on our code of ethics. We had about 25 city managers and assistant city managers from across the state go through that full-day session, and the result of that is that they become certified in ethics training, and they can go off to their areas of the state and make sure that city managers have the opportunity to receive the annual training on our ethics that we require to be a member in good standing. Thanks, Colin. Next slide. The mayor mentioned, but I'll just give it a bit more of a plug. Last Saturday, we had another movie in the park. This last Saturday, we showed Little Rascals. There was really good attendance there. And council, so that you know, on April 2nd, we'll show Peter Rabbit 2, and then, May 7th, we'll be viewing Moana. These movies in the park during the springtime are all at Bob Bryant Park. Please come out and join us. It is a good time. And so, that did happen on March 5th. What didn't happen on March 5th was the unofficial car show that we had heard was scheduled and planned, and due to the positive intervention from the Bastrop Police Department, Assistant City Manager Gleason had a big role to play in that as well. They decided to take that somewhere else. And no, in case you were wondering, we had no incidents of reckless driving at the movie in the park. So, we will meet again on March 22nd. And just to highlight a few things, council, you may recall that we have a contract with PHI Health that is the air ambulance service that City of Bastrop citizens have the ability to take advantage of because of our contract with PHI Health. That contract is up for renewal, and we'll be asking you to consider that in two weeks. We have a somewhat significant budget amendment that we're going to be asking council to consider on first reading on March 22nd as well. CFO Waldron will present that in its detail. We've been working with the Cultural Arts Commission for a few months now. That's a relatively newly created commission of the city, and they have done what we've asked them to do, and that's to create a work plan, and they will, and Assistant City Manager Gleason's been working very closely with them and putting that together. That will be presented at your next meeting. And Mayor Schrader has a couple of board vacancies that she is endeavoring to fill, make those appointments. And as you know, according to our procedures, those are subject to the confirmation of the entire council. Thank you, council.
Thank you, city manager. Council, any questions for the city manager? All right. CFO Waldron has made a request that we do 6A next. Our representative from Belt Harris has to drive all the way back to Houston. So, he has promised that he's only going to go on for one or two hours, but we're going to go ahead and do 6A. Receive the annual comprehensive financial report for the period ending September 30th, 2021, which includes the independent auditor's report presented by the independent audit firm of Belt Harris LLLP. And Ms. Waldron, are you going to do any part of this, or he's on his own?
He is.
All right. Welcome.
Everybody always stumbles on the paycheck name, so...
Okay.
I always say, if you say paycheck, you got it close enough.
There you go.
So, it's an honor to be here tonight. Thank you very much. First of all, I want to recognize management, the city manager and Ms. Waldron as well for their cooperation throughout the audit process. And as you know, the audit process is really putting, it's the book-in on the budget process. You start almost six months before the fiscal year starts, and the audit process takes six months afterwards. So, it's almost a 24-month time period. So, this is the book-in on that process, and again, very important part of the process. Over on page 17 is our independent auditor's report. Very pleased to announce it's an unmodified opinion, which is the highest-level assurance we can provide city council that all the disclosures required by generally accepted accounting principles have been included, and the financial statements are materially correct. There is a tremendous amount of financial information within the report, and to get all of that in within that two hours, I've been allotted. I'm going to have to talk very fast, but in all seriousness, over on pages 38 and 39, if you are only going to look at two pages within this entire document, these would be the two pages I would ask you to look at. This is a statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance for your governmental funds. The general fund is presented in the far-left-hand column. Total revenues for the year came in at $15.2 million. Total expenditures came in at $13 million. After taking into account some other financing sources and uses of $590,000, you ended up with a positive net increase for the year of $2.8 million. You began the year with a fund balance of $4.3 million, and you ended the year with a fund balance of $7.1 million. Now, the most important thing to remember, as always, is that financial rating agencies, financial advisors will look at your fund balance in comparison to your operating budget, and they want to know how many days of operations do you have on hand? So, 60 days is generally kind of the targeted minimum amount of fund balance they would be looking for you to have. And so, the cities at about 53% are well over 180 days of fund balance. So, you're in a great shape from a fund balance perspective. So, that is excellent news to report to you. Over on page 46 is the results of operations for your business-type activities. These funds are presented on the full accrual basis of accounting. The Water and Sewer Fund is presented in the far-left-hand column. Revenues came in at $6.9 million. Operating expenditures were $4.8 million. After taking into account interest, expense, and other financing usage, you had almost a break-even of $250,000. Looking at the Bastrop Power and Light operations, total revenues were $7.1 million, comparison to expenditures of $6.9 million. And after other financing uses, you also broke even, or substantially broke even, at $250,000. And also, just kind of pointing those numbers out to you, this is a real balancing act as you consider, you're running these like a business. And so, you've got to set your user rates to achieve the results that you want. And so, this becomes a real balancing act. Prior to the meeting, Ms. Waldron was mentioning you are going to be looking at the rate studies in the near future. And again, that's going to be a real critical thing as you look at your upcoming costs that you have coming up and how much you need to increase rates, and increasing rates is always unpopular, but it is a necessary thing to achieve the results because if you don't change the rates, then you end up with negative numbers right here, and you don't want to do that. So, again, that's an important part to be looking at in the near future. That concludes my remarks here today. More than happy to entertain any questions city council may have.
Council, any questions? You know, one of the most important things that we do is have fiscal responsibility for the taxpayer dollars and to know that Ms. Waldron and her organization are keeping track of them and giving us a good rating. It puts us in a good position when we go try, when we have to borrow money, and I just really appreciate your firm and the independent audit results.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Council, anything else? Councilmember Crouch?
Great job by your firm on the audit and then just our staff. It's always great to see green in the report, so it's a good thing. Could be in an awfully worse position than what we are, so I'm thankful with going through the COVID and everything that we're at. Thank you.
All right. Great job. Please be careful going back to Houston.
Thank you so much.
Don't speed. All right. We are going to go back to item 5A. Receive presentation on the enforcement of Bastrop Building Block Code, Chapter 8, temporary signs, including best-of-Bastrop banners, and provide direction as appropriate. I have two people signed up to speak on this, and what we'll do is let staff present, and council may have some questions for staff, and then we'll hear from you guys. It's important to note that this is under a work session, so we won't be voting on anything tonight. But council, what staff is looking for is some feedback and some direction, and then, ideally, depending on how much the direction would change, that's something that would come back to the next meeting for us to consider for a vote. So, with that, Ms. Gleason?
Yes, good evening. So, I come to you tonight, mayor, city council, city manager. I'm seeking from council. Policy direction was granted to us through the Sign Code in regards to temporary banners, and we are early in on that enforcement policy. So, I just wanted to ensure that we are staying the path as the policy direction indicates. Our Sign Code was adopted in November of 2019, and it was updated in June of 2021. As you all know, we have worked very hard to begin enforcement on March 1st of 2022. And as we've been going through this community education process, we've been receiving feedback from our business community, specifically in regards to 8.4 of the code, which speaks to temporary signage, and in particular, the best-of-Bastrop banners, but temporary banners as a whole. So, temporary signs, what is included as a temporary sign are banner signs, our bandit signs, construction site signs, and development information signs. Tonight, I just wanted to take a minute to remind council on the code as written, just under banners. So, four banners, they can be four feet in height and up to 75% of the width of a building. So, four banners, they can be four feet in height and up to 75% of the width of a building with a maximum of 48 feet. Each property is allowed one banner. They can have banners up for two weeks per permit, and they're allowed up to four permits per year. All four corners of the banners have to be securely attached to the building, the fence, or with yard stakes, and they cannot be located in the site triangle.
Ms. Gleason, you said it could be 48 feet long, and what I'm reading says it's 48 square feet.
Oh, I apologize. Misspoke.
Okay.
Yeah, and I can't hear, so that's why I'm.
You're fine. You're fine. Yeah.
I can't hear.
So, each of those permits cost $58.50. So, I come here this evening just to receive council feedback on going forward with the policy direction.
Council, any questions for Ms. Gleason? Before we hear from the, Councilmember Jackson?
I was just going to say, don't we have some headphones or hearing devices that are available?
I don't know if they still work anymore.
We don't have them anymore? Okay. For some of our citizens that, you know, are having difficulty hearing, so.
Councilmember Crouch?
On the signage, I know that we've had the new signage out for a while, and it's given everybody, should have been plenty of time to adjust to the new signage ordinances and the things that we've put into place. I think that the new sign enforcement officer was taking a month of marcher since she's been here to kind of walk the town and get a feel for what we've got up as far as signage and illegal signs and legal signs, and has been able to correspond with the people and get some ideas on that. I, I think that, from my perspective, maybe we could look at modifying some of the sign ordinances based on the informations that she's received. I think that maybe we could look at delaying some of the fines and turn them into, oh, what's the word?
Warning.
Warning, yeah. Warning, for lack of a better word, until the end of March, so we could take a little bit more time to give people time to adjust if their sign's not right. And I understand that we've, we've had this out, it's not a brand-new thing, and we've already made a change to it once. The other thing I just wanted to reflect on as far as that is, I think it needs to stay a living, breathing document, just like our building and permitting and planning and zoning, that Bastrop's going to change, or areas of town are going to change, and we should have the sign ordinances change as the city changes. So, that could do different things in different parts of town as we, as we do that. So, my two cents on the thing is that maybe we give a little bit more leniency on the, on the first set of fines, give them time to comply if they didn't know that they weren't or not in compliance, and then just keep it a living document so that we can change things as needed. And one other thing, I'd heard today that the City of Elgin, and this has to do with some temporary banners, so when a new company comes to town, you get a temporary banner from the City of Elgin. And I don't know if this is a fact, I just heard it this afternoon, but they actually, the city gives the people the sign, the companies the sign. They don't have to pay for the sign, pay for a permit for the sign. They don't have to listen to the complaints from the other people that don't have a sign because this company may have one for a grand opening. And maybe that's something that we could consider as, as a new company comes to downtown Bastrop or in the City of Bastrop, maybe the city is a welcoming thing, can give them a temporary sign until they get their real sign up, and then we don't have to worry about the temporary sign, temporary banner, and then help out with the company with a new signage.
So, I'm happy to reach out to the City of Elgin and talk to them to find out what it is that they do. I think our notice that we send does give an opportunity for cure prior to violations beginning. I think in particular, if council's interested in pursuing a different set of requirements or adjustments to the fee schedule for temporary banners, staff is happy to address that and bring that back for consideration. I think that's the type of input that.
Councilmember Jackson?
I just, I'm somewhat in agreement with what Councilmember Crouch is saying. I mean, after I got, I did mention earlier that I did get some calls from different people about temporary signs that they had. Some of them were nonprofit organizations that were working out of a church or out of another business, specifically the Knights of Columbus contacted me and said, "The fundraiser that they do is just during Lent on Fridays is really going to be affected by this," and they were really concerned, and they were not aware that this was going into effect. I mean, because they didn't get any notice, because they're not a business, they're a nonprofit. And so, I think that we need to take into consideration some of those type of organizations, as well as maybe looking more closely at some of the things that have, that are affecting us a little bit more than I guess we thought they might affect us. And so, I think a look at those and trying to specifically try to find out what the, what the citizens are needing and what their complaints may be, and how we can cure that without fining them.
And City Manager, can you speak to fines? I don't think anybody's been fined yet. Is that correct?
No, they have not been, and, and thank you for that. And if I, if I might just interject a procedural suggestion. What, what we are asking council tonight is, is to confirm the policy direction that you provided when council approved the amendments to the sign ordinance several months ago. And to Rebecca's point, much, almost all of the feedback we've received so far is about temporary signs or banners. We're hearing the same thing, Councilmember Jackson, that you just described. And what I am suggesting is that it's more important, it's more valuable for us to hear that policy direction, that do you want to continue to limit banner signs to four times a year, two weeks at a time? That kind of feedback would be really valuable, more so than the, the process of administering the sign code. Suggestions about how lenient we should be aren't frankly that, that helpful. If you're going to ask us to go enforce an ordinance, then we're going to go enforce an ordinance. The, the process itself has lots of inherent protections for, for folks according to city code. And to the mayor's point, no, we have not issued any fines yet. We've had several months of what we've called a grace period. I think, and we're certainly, we're certainly not suggesting that, that people were caught off guard and are not otherwise ready to comply with the new requirements. What we're suggesting is that we've heard particular feedback about, about banners. The process is that before there's ever a citation, there is a, there is a written notice of a potential violation. There are several days then for the sign owner to, to respond to that. The way we approach all code enforcement here is issuing a citation is, is a last resort. That is never what we want to do. We're about seeking compliance. We do that through education. It's not ever about issuing a citation and having somebody pay a fine.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Those of you that were on council with me realize that this was my sticking point. I beat you guys over the head on how important this was going to be. Nobody believed me, so telling you now, I was right.[1156.14][1156.17](laughter) Always right. But there's a few things that you wanted, some suggestions on the policy. The, the banners, I believe is the, one of the big policies you're looking for. I myself, I don't like the two weeks, and paying $50 for two weeks is just crap because you can't make enough money for the, can't even pay for the banner with the business in two weeks. So, the, the way I see it, it's unfair for the, the A-frames on Main Street, they pay the $50 and they get it for a whole darn year. Well, the ones of us that can't be on Main Street, we're, we're out of luck. I can't put an A-frame on the highway. So, I think if I go in and buy a banner, permit, I should at least get to use it for a year, maybe not up a year, maybe up four times a year, but I should still be able to buy that with one ban, with one, with one permit, the same $50. And maybe pick, okay, I'll put it up, and I'm only going to put it up on this time. Okay. I'll put it up Valentine's, Easter, and Christmas. You know, so give me, I can set up my date so they can still, you know, the code enforcement can still enforce it, but I don't want to go there and pay $50 for every one. It's just not feasible. Okay? The other thing, I agree with having the one banner, and I'm happy to hear that we're giving just warnings out, not paying fees, which that's exactly what this council's always wanted. We wanted you to comply. We don't want to make, it's not, we're not out for the fee, we're out for the compliance. I also know the subject was for the Best of Bastrop, sorry Debbie, for forgetting what the call. And so, most of you know Debbie is like one of my closest friends, so I reached out for her because I wanted her to hear. I was going to say no upfront. So, we talked a lot about it and told her about the banners and how, you know, nobody can do that. So, we've came up with some solutions, and hopefully she'll come up with that with, when she comes up and talks, right, Debbie?
Yes.
Okay. So, I think we might have a solution that Debbie will share with you that we came up with to help her the Best of Bastrop. Now, the banner part, I think two weeks is not enough. Maybe not. Maybe, I don't know. But, and it has to be in good comply, and it has to be, you know. My other question on the whole banner and sign situation, Jennifer may have to answer this for me. Okay, so, if you have, if you're putting up a regular sign, like a wooden sign, and instead of painting, it's the banner material stapled to it, so you can't see it's a banner? Is that a banner, or is that still a sign?
That's a banner.
Okay. Hope mine doesn't break.[1317.64][1317.67](laughter) And that's my two, first, you know, we talked about this for a long time. We went through several times. This has been on council's agenda for a long time. I think the mayor doesn't want to hear me talk about signs one more time. So, but yeah, it does, that part of it, the three weeks is definitely, or the two weeks needs to be in $50 a time, it's just not enough.
Thank you, Councilmember Rogers. And so, I want to make a couple of comments. Appreciate the specifics. I think that's really important. That's, that's how staff knows how to respond to what we want. Councilmember Jackson? I too receive calls, and those of us who are in the religion understand that Lent is longer than two weeks. And so, absolutely appreciate that timing is, is something that needs to be balanced and make sense. And I appreciate Councilmember Rogers' point on having some equity between the A-frames and, and the banners. I do think it's important that we keep in mind that one of the things that we're trying to avoid is Lent banners that are up in October. And I'm not saying that that has happened, I'm saying that we've all driven by and seen banners that are flapping in the wind, we've seen banners that are advertising an event that's three months old, and that's part of what we're, we're trying to do, is that if, if you're not permitted, then, then the city has a means to, to remove that to keep our, to keep our community looking good. I had, I've, I too have received a couple of emails about this and exchanged some information, and I have heard loudly from folks that are, "It's my stinking property, I can put any sign up anywhere I want, anytime I want." And I've equally heard from people who have said, "The more signs you have, the less impact any one sign has." And they don't want to drive through town and see signs plastered everywhere. Everything is about balance, everything is about some, some fairness and some equity. So, staff, I'm hearing loud and clear, and, and maybe we don't make any final recommendations till we hear from the two folks that are signed up to speak, but it sounds like in 8.4.001B3, the one banner would maybe placed two weeks, four times a year, is definitely something that council wants to take a look at, and we, we won't be voting tonight, but we can give staff some feedback on what we do think would be equitable. Council, are, are you okay if we hear from Ms. Denny and Ms. Hudgens before we continue the conversation? So, it's like, were you done with your presentation, or did I totally interrupt you?
No, I'm done. Thank you, and thank you, Councilmember Rogers. I met with Debbie prior to this evening, and so, the program has been around for a long time in our community, 18 years under first the Austin American Statesman, and then now under Ms. Denny, and the banners have been around for five years. And so, I know we have a lot of businesses that have those. There are 140 categories, and when Ms. Denny counted for me, there are currently 40 banners in the city limits, so to kind of understand the impact.
Okay, great. Let's have Ms. Denny come up and speak. Ms. Denny, if you would please state your name and your address, and you will have three minutes to speak. And the great news is, because this is a posted agenda item, we can ask you questions and we can talk back and forth, so.
Thank you very much, Mayor and City Manager and Council. I am Debbie Denny, 702 Jefferson Street, Bastrop, 78602. I own Debbie Denny Media Solutions, and I happen to have started the Best of Bastrop County Contest when I was at the Bastrop Advertiser in 2004. It's been a, an extremely popular contest, and we started out with 50 nominations or entries in the various categories to having 130 categories this last time. So, in the past, we've always given out a certificate that has their, the category they want on, and then their, the name of the business or business person, and we give a first and two runners-up. So, anyway, in 2013, the Statesman came up with this idea to do window decals because Austin was doing that. That's it. No certificates, nothing, and everybody hated it. They were so upset that the next year, we came back with not only giving out the certificates, but we also had a banner done that they had a choice whether or not they wanted to, to purchase it or not and hang it. And they hung, and they did, and they hung it proudly. And that's the first thing that people ask for, especially if they're first-time winners, that they want to be able to hang that banner. Because I know people have told me that they, they look for those banners before they decide where to go, and they've just been very popular. So, anyway, this past year, well, in December 2020, I was let out of my contract with the Statesman, and I waited a while to find out if they were going to continue the best contest or not, and they didn't. So, I changed the name to Bastrop County's Best and did a complete new logo. I think the banner this year is the prettiest it's ever been. I sold 38 banners within the city limits and 30 outside. And, but as far as the categories, it was 130 categories with three winners in each. So, anyway, it is a very proud town, you know, and they get so excited when they win, and they feel like that banner really helps them show their pride. This year, instead of doing a newspaper special section, I did do a full-color magazine that all the winners are listed in, and there's advertisement in it. But the, you know, that banner helps draw business with people driving by, you know? And anyway, I think that, I would love to see you figure out a way that with the best banner could continue to do that, because I'd hate to see where outside the city limits the businesses get to hang a banner and not the ones that are inside. So, I am open for suggestions on what else we could do to help the businesses show their pride. I did some research on maybe doing a flag, if flags are allowed. It's about, it would be three foot by five foot, and anyway, it'd be a little bit more expensive than the banners were, but I'm willing to do it, you know, if that's, if that's acceptable and what the businesses want. I just know that they really care about this contest, and they really care when they win, and they really want to let people know as much as, you know, possible, and that's a way that they did.
Ms. Denny, how much are the banners? How much do they pay for the banners?
They're $150, but they're $35 if you bought an ad in, in the magazine, so.
And how much is the ad in the magazine?
Well, they vary. There's a.
From what to what?
As far as cost? Let's see, I think the full pages were $800, and then $700 for a half-page, so it's a much better deal to buy a full page. And then the quarter page was $350 or, so, yeah.
So, if a quarter page was 350, I pay $350, I get a quarter page ad and my banner?
No, you had to buy a half-page or a full page to get it for $35. I'm sorry.
Okay. So, so if I won, or I'm a runner-up, and I give a, do a half-page or a full page, and if I'm running a business, I'm pretty much, didn't even need the calculator. and if I'm running a business, I'm pretty much, didn't even need the calculator to know the full page for a hundred dollars more is the way to go. Then for eight hundred and thirty-five dollars, I get a full-page ad in the magazine that you did and I get a banner?
Right, but you could've taken advantage of the early bird discount, which would give you ten percent discount.
This is why she's Debbie Denny.
Yeah, I understand it. And so part of the problem, and I'm gonna be super frank, because I hang out with her and we know that we all tell each other the truth. There are a lot of people and they are completely misinformed and I am acknowledging that, that think it's a city event. Or think it's a county event.
Right.
And they're saying, well, the city's already getting eight hundred dollars for the banner, I had to pay eight hundred dollars for the banner and now you want fifty dollars for the permit. And it's like, well, we didn't charge the eight hundred dollars, it's not our program, but we do have permits for banners. Because some people wanna hang a banner that's, maybe they didn't win, cuz they didn't have the right category or, you know, whatever, and they wanna do a banner too. So we have to be fair and consistent. So I'm super interested in any suggestions that you have, because perhaps, um, maybe, maybe there's a way that the permit for the banner can be included in that cost.
I'm, I'm certainly open to that, to that, you know, and, um, whatever else is, is legal. And I do apologize for not be, knowing more about the ordinance, um, you know, I, not trying to cause problems or anything. I just love to see the businesses show their pride, so, willing to work with you however.
Awesome, and we're all in it together. Thank you, so, um, Councilmember Rogers, do you have a question for Ms. Denny?
Well, just, you know, that's why I didn't buy a banner last year, cuz I knew I'd get in trouble. Um, just, I know she's out of time, but one of the things that she didn't mention about the flags that she's thinking about is right now, if you're a downtown business, you really don't have any way to hang the banner.
Hang the flag, oh, hang the banner, but you could hang your flag.
You've seen in the past or, or other main streets where they can, I know, drill a little hole in our brand-new sidewalk, but they hang like the American flags going down the soul holes, where main, if she could switch to a flag, if it was allowed, um, then even the downtown b- businesses could hang flags and not be a banner. Then at the end, next year, they might be able to, been into places that they have all the different flags hanging up for all the different years they won.
That cute.
Would be something else too, besides just a banner, so, I think she came up with the good ideas for the flags.
Cuz we make the, make them different each year, so.
Councilmember Jackson?
No, I was just gonna say, I'm, I'm, I'm listening to the flag idea, but I mean, I, I really like the banners for that because they are very, I mean, they do attract people to the business and I've heard that from several business owners, they really would like to do that. And I've, I've also noted that outside the city limits, of course, we see quite a few of them. And there are some other groups that, um, back to the, um, not the Best of Bastrop or Best Drop, Bastrop Best situation, but are, are putting banners right outside our city limits so that they can attract businesses in and they're doing things like that. And so that's kind of concerning to me in a sense that our people are, like for our fish fry, we're outside of the city limits, finding locations to direct people to the church for the fish fries because of the concern that they had about putting the banners or the flags up at the church in, in that area. But, um, the banners, I think, are, these particular banners, the Bastrop Best are very, very informative. And I refer people that come into town to, to look for those banners and, of course, the magazine is distributed also and they see those. And so I find that very helpful and I think it's very good for our local businesses and it's also good for our economy, cuz it does bring people in. So I, I'm trying to figure out a way to make this work, not only for the businesses, but for, you know, to, with our ordinances and maybe we can make some adjustments to that and I'm very much willing to make some changes with it, to help them out.
And I really appreciate that, I, I love the fact that we're talking about this and, and being able to work together and we'll make it happen, so, thank you.
Thing, I, from the, from the conversations that I've had, if there was a way that the cost of the permit, because the permit still has to, we have to cover our costs for that, we have to keep up with it, we, uh, as I told someone, the permit's how you keep track of people who are following the rules and people who are not following the rules, that's how we know it's a legal sign. And we have a code enforcement officer and they gotta have something to go by. So if the, if they weren't having to pay for the permit, if there was a way that we could address that through this particular program.
Exactly.
And if we amended the timing and we'll have a conversation about the timing, I really think that would then allow, cuz not everyone participates in this program. So if they want to, there's a way to do it, and if they wanna do their own personal custom banner, there's a way to do it so that there's equity across all the businesses.
As long as they're a winner, right?
No, 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 I'm not saying they can do, you're, I'm saying if they wanna hang up.
Oh, I get you.
I'm a cool dress store, please come shop here, right? That, you know. They, they may or may not want to hang your exact banner, but they may want to hang a banner. And so they gotta follow the same rules.
Absolutely.
Okay. Councilmember Rogers?
Just so Debbie understood what you were saying, they would be able to hang it all year.
Well, until we talk about timing.
Right, I'm just saying that she's thinking all year and you're talking about timing, I just wanna make sure she was understanding what you were saying.
Yeah, yeah, we'll come back and have the timing conversation.
Yes, all right, that sounds great.
Whatever you guys want, that's, that's the beauty of sitting up here, you get to set the policy. Um, Ms. Denny, is it okay if we hear from Ms. Hudgens? Was there anything else she want?
No, I'm good.
I will do it together, because she's basically covered a lot, sorry if I'm yelling, I can only hear out of one ear.
You are not yelling.
But she's covered a lot of bases. My deal was the Best of Bastrop, our sign is security against the fence. We make sure we don't ever let a staple come out of it. We also have a rollout sign that we do our specials. It's on our pro- we roll it in our, um, flower bed. It's off the street, people have access to walk up and down. But you can go down Main Street and they have patio tables and dine out on the front of the patios that people have to walk around, these people they're eating or dog. I understand a permit for the rollout, we roll it in, we roll it out, I understand that. But to pay fifty-eight fifty every two weeks for our banner?
Yes, ma'am.
That we keep secure, we take down the old ones. Do you want us to start painting it on the side of our building, Best of Bastrop? Because all we're facing on the, on the side of the one building is a parking lot. And if people can't drive by and see your sign, Best of Bastrop, or what you're eating that day, or the special, they just hook 'em on down and go somewhere else.
Yes, ma'am.
And it's all about, let's, Best of Bastrop is not for, for Gracie's, it's for Bastrop. It's everybody, we're all, I was really proud of me for you, from Houston, I won't ever go back. But we all have to work together, we're a small community. And it hurt the restaurant industry. If anybody wants to send me an application, bring 'em on because I'm ready to retire, I'm tired. But I'm tired of having to fight all this other stuff too.
Yes, ma'am.
Someone said, we have to work together, we do work together. I got a comment from her on my post, I apologize for my post. But I'm in it, we are a community, let's all work together, let's not fight each other over a sign.
Yes, ma'am.
We'll pay the rollout fee, just like the Best of Bastrop, we earned it every day.
Yes, ma'am, thank you so much for your comments. All right, Council.
Well, we're going home.
No, 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 wait, we gotta agree on the timing, but you're not, you haven't quite won, so hang on, hang on.
Oh, you didn't ask where I live.
It's okay, you live at seven oh six Pine Street. I can't spell that, Ms. Hudgens, and Ms. Hudgens, can you? Um, all right, Council, uh, I believe that banners and the price of fifty-eight fifty for the banner, I don't really think is under dispute. And if this particular program can include that price in it, then we're kinda done talking about the fee part, or is can. All right, so Ms. Denny's saying for that one, for everybody else, the banner, if you want a banner that is not a, um, you can't imitate your banner, but you can have a banner in front of your business, but you're gonna pay the fifty-eight fifty. So now the conversation is, is the banner temporary? Or is the, are all businesses allowed one banner all year long for the fifty-eight fifty? So I'm, this is the part where you guys chime in, Councilmember Rogers?
Okay, so my, what do you mean told you? So my question is, if I get a permit for a banner that's so big, but whatever, can I switch that banner out?
Yes, ma'am.
Does that have Christmas, Easter, you know?
We don't regulate content, um, so that banner can be cha- we just regulate the time period and the sizes and how it's attached and site triangles. Um, but if you currently, during that two-week period, want a different banner every day, as long as it meets all the requirements of size and attachment, then you can absolutely do that.
And since Council picked the two weeks, four times a year, cuz whether we picked it or not, we unanimously voted on it when we voted in June of twenty-one, which was just last year. It, what we said as a policy for staff to enforce was two weeks, four times a year. So, um, that would be eight weeks, do we wanna make it eight weeks, you get whenever you want, do we wanna make it twelve weeks? I'm looking for numbers.
I'm thinking if we're gonna support the Best of Bastrop banner, you're gonna do it all year. It's, it's one banner, we either allow it to go up all year or we don't allow it to go up. Why buy it if you're gonna make it go down and back up?
Okay, Councilmember Jackson?
I was gonna suggest that as well, I think, I mean, it's definitely a year-round process. I mean, to have it up for two weeks, four weeks, six weeks, I, I mean, it's a, it's an annual thing and so I think it should be year-round.
Okay, so, for instance, for the, um, for the church with Lent, they would pay a fifty-eight fifty and they could have a, a Lent banner? Then they could have a October.
The festival banners, all of those different things.
But they would only be allowed one banner at a time?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yep, that's what I'm agreeing, that's what I'm, I'm thinking, wanna make sure.
All right, so I don't know, and I'm gonna be looking at the attorney, does that, if you let it be up all year, does that make it not temporary and we just need to move it to a different spot in the ordinance?
Yes, ma'am, if, if that's Council's intention, I would say we restructure the ordinance and put it in a different place. And our, our Assistant City Manager, Lee Sin, is correct when she points out a few times, we don't regulate content. Once we start making certain exceptions based on the content of the banner.
That's a problem.
No matter how great your intentions are, no matter how much you love the program or the nonprofit, you're straying into an area that the constitutional law frowns upon and I would rather spend more time talking about than making decisions impromptu like this.
On the, on the content part?
Yes.
So if we say that, um, banners, that every business is allowed a single banner, that it costs fifty-eight dollars and fifty cents and they can have one a year, yeah, per year, it can last for a year. And part of that is you, you re-permit it so that we have an opportunity to make sure that it's the right size, that it's held up well, that kinda stuff. As long as we're not talking about content and we just say every business is allowed one, one banner, is, are we safe?
Yes, that would be fine.
And we would move it, remove it from temporary because it's not temporary if it's.
Correct.
Just remember, all of them aren't businesses though, they're orga- some organizations.
Thank you, good point, good point. So it would be addresses in P-four and P-five zoning?
Yes, I think that would work better because, uh, with the Knights of Columbus and with the church and everything, it's on the same property, but it's, they're different organizations.
Food pantry, lot, there's lot, yeah. So do y'all wanna think about that? I, I don't want us to do too much on the, on the fly, Councilmember Rogers?
I have one question, I believe, if you go to my gov, it asks what the sign's gonna say, so is that controlling content or not?
Uh, for a banner, it asks you, I can look into that.
So I'm, no, I'm gonna clarify, it's a clarifying question, I mean, so if the, I just wanna make sure my gov's not asking what is it gonna say or anything, because that's going against what we're just now talking about. So you should, so my gov should only ask where it is on your building, how big the sign is, is that correct?
I will.
Because I think there was letter size, right? Didn't you tell me that it asked you for font size or something?
Well, that, I, I don't remember on that part.
Let's just double-check.
I just wanna make sure, since that's what Ellen is saying, I wanna make sure we're not asking, or the computer's not asking something we're saying we shouldn't ask.
Absolutely.
Okay, all right. You, you have to come to the mic, Ms. Denny.
I was just gonna ask if you, whenever you clarify, uh, whether I'm gonna be paying for the permit for these banners, once you decide, or whether the business. Okay, good, all right.
There's a lot of shorthand conversation there, so.
I'll, I'll work with Ms. Denny, uh, to work out a process for us to be able to get.
And Ms. Denny, Councilmember Rogers did not mean that you were paying for every permit in the whole city, I think she was making a joke.
I was saying Debbie is paying for every permit in the whole city.
She caught ya, she caught you. Okay, City Manager, Assistant City Manager, you've got some, some guideline? Council, they'll bring that back at the, um, hopefully at the next council meeting and we'll make some, make those adjustments. And, uh, Councilmember Crouch, that becomes the living, breathing document, that's what we're talking about, right? So, okay, anything else that we need to talk about with respect to banners?
No, ma'am.
All right, thank you, Council. Thank you very much, appreciate that. All right, we are.
One other question.
Yes, Councilmember Jackson?
Now, that doesn't include, I mean, what we call the feather type signs, have, has anyone mentioned anything about that?
Those are banned.
Pardon?
I, they're banned. Feather flags are prohibited signs. Um, you guys in the back, correct me if I'm wrong, that wasn't an amendment from last June. I think feather flags have been prohibited for a while, the, the city hasn't been enforcing that. Uh, but no, feather flags are prohibited.
All right, I'm sorry.
Okay, um, I was just asking, because I, that was something else that people were asking me about and I didn't know that they were banned, period, okay. So a lot of people have been, they've had them up, but they were not legal, in other words, okay?
And actually, the temporary sign section, uh, the banner signs was actually copied over from the old code as well, that's been in the code since two thousand and eight.
Wasn't new either.
Yeah, it wasn't new either.
Right, thank you.
All right, thank you, thank you ladies, appreciate that very much. All right, Council, we're done with five A, we already took care of six A, so we are on six B. Received presentation of the amended strategic planning calendar for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Ms. Waldron, you're not even moving, Mr. Hoffman?
It's gonna be a really easy night for Ms. Ms. Waldron. Uh, a few months ago, Ms. Waldron did present the, uh, strategic planning calendar for the fiscal twenty-three budget year. And we have in front of you this evening, Council, on your, uh, at your seats is, um, a bit of an update from what's in your packet. And, and it's just a few things that I, I can quickly go over and I think many of you have heard about this already. Um, we are accelerating some of the budget planning process for fiscal twenty-three. Uh, some of the impetus for this is now we know who our, uh, new council members will be coming in May. Those council members who will be ultimately voting on a budget and a capital plan, uh, later this, this fiscal year in, in September. The, the additions to the, uh, planning calendar are highlighted in red and I'll, I'll, I'll describe those briefly. On Tuesday, April the fifth, Council, we are, we are suggesting a, a special city council planning session. This is a non-regular council meeting Tuesday, it's April the fifth. And we are proposing that we have two primary subjects for that evening. Uh, one is to, uh, have a good discussion with Council about emerging, uh, transportation planning issues for the city of Bastrop. In fiscal twenty-three, uh, we are planning to ask Council to, uh, approve fundings to update our, uh, master transportation plan. We think this is an important issue to discuss comprehensively. Uh, there's been some discussion recently about what our code requirements are relative to new development and what we require new development to do with regard to the construction of and the dedication of, of roads. Uh, as, I think Council knows, our Planning and Zoning Commission is taking that subject on. And in fact, on March seventeenth, the Planning and Zoning Commission has scheduled a, a workshop uh, where they talk about our code requirements in general. And also at that workshop, they'll talk about a plan and a schedule for specifically talking about the city's roadway requirements imposed on new development specifically as it regards the Highway seventy-one corridor. That is an aspect of our transportation planning. Uh, it is gonna be our suggestion that we need to look at that beyond just what we ask development to, to do. With the end, with, it's our, it's our belief that just taking that approach will just bring us, uh, further behind the curve on transportation planning. Uh, we can ask a developer to do, uh, some things, but state law and I think case law, uh, limits what a city can do. Through the development process, there's a. through the development process. There's a proportionality element of all of that. We can't make a developer build a road that doesn't abut their property. They can't, we can't make a developer build roads to accommodate traffic that that development's not providing. And so there are some roadway networks that we think need to be improved sooner rather than later. And so, council, as we go into building a capital plan for fiscal '23, we want to have this conversation about what, how we plan for that, what our potential funding sources are for that. We can issue debt for that. We can potentially look at four B funds for that. We're always seeking grant funds for that. That's how we got the Agnes Project approved. We're pursuing grant funding for the extension of Blakie as we speak. So that's the kind of conversation we need, we want to have with council in a workshop kind of setting. We also want to talk about water master planning that evening and get some general direction from council on that. And we'll also want to give council an update on where we are with the design of the water treatment plant and the expenses associated with that and how those projected expenses impact, according to our rate model, the rates that our water and wastewater customers will be faced with over the next several years. We'll also want to talk more short-term about this summer, and we're going to give you some feedback on some ideas we're pursuing to ensure that we've got a safe and redundant water supply this summer in case one of our shallow, alluvial water wells fails on us. That could be a function of a particularly dry summer. Unfortunately, it would be much better if our water plant were here already. It won't be here for this summer, and we want to make sure council has the opportunity to give us some good feedback on what we see our short-term and long-term options are. So that's April 5th. And then on, and again, that is a non-regular council day, and we would encourage councilmembers-elect Lee and Kirkland to sit at the table with council as you're having those discussions in a non-voting format. And then on April 19th, we, again, this is an acceleration, council, of how we have approached this in the past. We'll want to give council an update on where we are on implementing the city's comprehensive plan. We'll ask our Fabiola De Carvallo, our engineering and project management director, to give you an update on where we are on our capital planning process. And importantly, we'll see how all that boils down into an update on our fiscal forecast. We've got a meeting with Councilmember Plunkett and the councilmembers-elect scheduled for March 17th, I think, where we'll orient them on how the fiscal forecast works. Other councilmember veterans have been through that already. So again, we wanted to make sure those two workshops were on the calendar and on your radar. We are targeting a 4:00 PM start date for both of those. We're very flexible on that. We can make that later in the day if that works better for you. City Secretary Franklin will follow up with each of you after this meeting to nail down the specifics there. And I'm not sure on the location either. I'm not sure that the convention center is available for either of those dates. If it's not in the convention center, we can do it in this room.
Councilmember Rogers, are you okay with 4:00 PM starts, or do we know that 4:30 would be better?
That's way too far in my future.
That's a whole nother month away.
Yeah, and I get more employees. I'm sure it'll be fine. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Okay, and we, so we have received that presentation. And council, you all had a copy of that amended calendar at the dais, and the public has that in the packet if they need it. All right, the next item is citizen comments. I have two citizen comments. The first one, council, you have a copy of it. It is from Ruth Spooner, who lives at 1409 Jefferson Street, and she has some concerns about Lover's Lane and traffic in that area. So I'd encourage all of you to read that citizen comment from her. The next person I have signed up to speak is Joe Grady Tuck. If you'd please come forward and say your name and address, and you will have three minutes. Thank you.
My name is Joe Grady Tuck. I live at 1503 Wilson Street here in Bastrop. I didn't come to speak about the sign matter, but it's illustrative of what I think as a seventh-generation resident of this county. And I know that Councilman Peterson and Councilman Jackson, I mean, I'm sorry, Councilman, yeah, Councilman Jackson, we're the only natives here in this room, at least at this podium. And nobody has ever thought about regulating banners in this town. This is another example of the rampant overregulation that this planning department is guilty of. And they hand out indiscriminate citations for this overregulation. And the one contrary to what was said by the city manager, they are handed out indiscriminately. For example, Barnard Tires got a citation. They didn't give a warning. Somebody else got a stop-work order today, and that is Councilman Crouch, who's the subject of my talk. And he got a stop-work order because they said he didn't have an engineering study. Here it is, right here. I'm going to give it to you. I asked the city manager to please take care of this. I'm tired of battling with the city planning staff. They don't respond. He has an engineering report. This was given out as a punitive measure because this B-three code, and it's particularly enforced by this planning staff, has caused a barrier to development in this city. And it has been, every developer in this town is up in arms about it. You heard, some of them won't come here and talk to you about it because they're afraid. But others, like Rick Neff, did come in the last meeting, and he told you, this man has 300 homes under construction employing our citizens, plumbers, skilled tradesmen, and it takes nine months to get a permit. Now, this discontent among the building community has resulted in a political movement. The first person to come get elected and complain about it is Jimmy Crouch. He stuck his head in the lion's mouth, and they're trying to bite it off. And the, for example, he has, not only did he have an engineering report contrary to this stop-work order, he had permission to move a house. The copies of it are in your folders. But despite that permission, Shirley Ellis went out there and gave him a stop-work order, and then charged him eighteen hundred dollars to file for another permit, which he was never told he needed, despite the fact that she was in on the whole proceeding of granting the first two permits. And then she wasn't satisfied with charging him eighteen hundred dollars. She went down and filed a criminal case against a council member.
Thank you, Mr. Tuck.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Read your, please read your...
Council, that brings us to the consent agenda. Does anybody want an item pulled from the consent agenda? Madam Secretary, if you'd please read the consent agenda?
The consent agenda reads as follows. Item 8A, consider action to approve city council minutes from the February 22nd, 2022 regular meeting. Item 8B, consider action to approve the certification of unopposed candidates for the May 7th, 2022 general election for Bastrop, Texas. Item 8C, consider action to approve the first and second readings of ordinance number 2022-09 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, declaring unopposed candidates in the May 7th, 2022 election as Exhibit A, general city election to Place 1 and Place 5, counseling the election as Exhibit B, declaring the candidates elected and providing for an effective date. Item 8D, consider action to approve the first and second readings of ordinance number 2022-11 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, declaring measures moot in the May 7th, 2022 special election on charter amendments, counseling the election as Exhibit A and providing an effective date. Item 8E, consider action to approve resolution number R-2022-34 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, in support of the Capital Area Council of Governments' application for enhanced fine particulate matter monitoring in central Texas and establishing an effective date. This concludes the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Please for approval.
Second, I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Jackson and a second from Councilmember Rogers. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, council. We're moving on to item 9A. Consider action to approve the second reading of ordinance number 2022-08 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, annexing the Colorado River, the 35.5 acres of land out of the Stephen F. Austin survey, abstract number two, located west of Lover's Lane and south of the Pecan Park subdivision, as shown in Exhibit A, providing for findings of fact, adoption, establishing, zoning, and character district, repealer severability, filing and enforcement, establishing an effective date, and proper notice and meeting. Ms. Bill?
Good evening. So remember from the last meeting, we had a series of applications that were talking about specifically the movie studio known as Bastrop, Colorado, bin development. And that's what's shown on the map. What we're talking about tonight is just the annexation of the Colorado River, and that is so we can get to the Colorado, Bastrop, Colorado, bin property. So this is the first step that'll allow us then to do the next annexation that has been requested by the owner. We have authority under the Texas Local Government Code, Chapter 43, to annex navigable rivers, and so that is what we're doing here.
Council? Councilmember Rogers?
Okay, so just correct my memory. I know at our last meeting, we had several public hearings, not particularly voted on anything.
Correct.
But we did vote on this particular item. I just want to make sure everybody remembers, because I know we had a lot of just public hearings without voting. So I wanted everybody to realize this actually is the second reading.
Yes, ma'am.
So, because I know last year, last year, see? So I wanted to move to approve. I asked all my questions last time.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Rogers.
Second.
And a second from Mayor Pro Tem Peterson. Is there any further discussion? Councilmember Plunkett, did you have a comment? Okay. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Thank you, council. The motion passes unanimously. We are now moving on to item number 10, executive session. Item 10A, city council shall convene and to close executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, to seek the advice of legal counsel regarding the State of Texas versus James Robert Crouch, cause number 20211193, notice of ordinance violation for without a permit at 602 Martin Luther King Jr. Drive, Bastrop, Texas, including a briefing on the assignment of a visiting judge, appointment of an outside prosecutor, upcoming jury trial, related expenses and matters related to compliance with the Code of Ordinances and Charter. It is 7:54, and we are in executive session. Good evening. It is 10:44, and we are out of executive session into open session on item number 11. There is no action as a result of executive session, which brings us to agenda item 12. Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, mayor. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
A second.
I have a motion from Mayor Pro Tem Peterson, a second from Councilmember Rogers. It is 10:45, and we are adjourned. Everyone be safe.